Good evening. This meeting of the Notaway County Board of Supervisors will now come to order. We have Dr. Leroy Bradshaw with us tonight. And Dr. Bradshaw, will you offer the invocation for us, please?
Let's go to God in prayer. Father, there was a day in which you said unto us, "A child is given unto us, a Savior. A Son is given to us, and on His shoulders will be the government." Lord, we thank you. For the words that you have spoken, may we learn to listen to them, to know that Jesus Christ, whom we crucified because of our sins, you saved. And you saved those who come to you, as you have promised to us, that if we will seek you, we will find you, and you will love us. And for this, Lord, we ask upon this government that you be present in the hearts of those who govern; be present in the hearts of those who are governed. We thank you for allowing us, which we did not choose, to be born in this place. We did not choose our parents or our DNA, but as you said to Jeremiah, "Before you were conceived in the womb, I knew you, and I had plans for you, plans to give you hope and a future, plans to give you protection and love." For this, Lord, we ask upon this body, upon those who speak tonight, upon those who have gathered here in this place, and upon all your people. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Bradshaw. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, members, honorable members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. We have two items to add to, one item to add and one item to move. This evening, we would like to take item H, sorry, H four, Kristi Hudson, the Commissioner of Revenue, and have her presentation moved to immediately following approval of the minutes. And then add an item J nine under New Business, a donation request, which Mr. Supervisor Rourke will carry. Those are all, Madam Chairman.
All right.
Madam Chair, there was one other item I wanted to clarify with Mr. Costin. We spoke about it earlier. There was a motion that was made, I was not here last month, but there was a motion that was made a few months back about the wording of the solar ordinance and the comprehensive plan. And I just wanted to confirm as to whether, when, because it was a formal motion that passed. Me and Mr. Bowman voted against it, but because the motion was passed, I wanted to make sure that we're not falling behind that timeline when we suspend it to bring it back.
Is that something that Mr. Zodi can address in his departmental report?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
All right. So we'll need a motion to approve the agenda with two amendments, moving item number H four to follow, immediately follow approval of the minutes, and adding item J nine donation request.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. All right. The agenda with the amendments as presented is approved. So in our package tonight, we have minutes from regular work sessions for February nine and April 14, joint work session with Notaway County School Board, April 28, Board's Budget Work Session, May 12, regular monthly board meeting, June 16, Board's Budget Adoption Meeting, June 27. Any questions or comments about the minutes? Who will need a motion to adopt the minutes as presented?
Madam Chair, I move that we receive and adopt the minutes.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and we adopt the minutes. All right. So Ms. Hudson, Commissioner of Revenue. Hi, Ms. Hudson, how are you?
Good. How are y'all?
Good. How you doing?
So the increase in the personal property taxes is obviously of concern. We appreciate you being here tonight to address this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I added a couple others in there, just to come and give y'all an idea with the different rates.
Ms. Hudson, do you have another one for Mr. Bowen and another one for myself? But I can, I can share. That's okay.
Sure.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, she can move it.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So the first thing tonight I want to discuss is the PPTR percentage and why the percentage is decreasing while the values are increasing. Being involved in the budget this year for the first time since I was elected, and Mr. Costin asking me where I got the PPTR percentage from, led me to ask other commissioners, and so I'm here this evening to explain. Starting in 2006, the state reimburses the county $1,049,790 for providing the required personal property tax relief on qualifying vehicles. This figure is based on what the county collected in 2005. The county gets the same reimbursement every year. The relief that the county provides should be approximately equal to what the state reimburses. In years past, the relief given has been significantly more than the relief reimbursed. For example, in '21, the relief given was $1,352,992.65. This is $303,202, $303,202.65 more than what the state reimbursed the county. I did some research today and looking back at the last 20 years, the PPTR percentage has not been below 60%. What I did not know until recently is it is part of my job as the Commissioner to figure what that percentage should be. So it was always given to my office by past administration. Because this has been done incorrectly for so long, instead of only lowering percentage some over time, I want to fix the problem this year going forward. Over the last six years, the citizens of the county have received $1,027,274.89 more relief than the county has reimbursed. I know this is bad timing. I get it. It affects me also. But I was elected to serve and do right by my constituents, and fixing this error now is doing the right thing. As of yesterday, I have also found another error. I was always told that the rate that the PPTR was taken from was the rate when the PPTR went into effect in 1998, which was $3.15. When the tax relief was given on the first $20,000, it was given on the value times the $3.15 times the PPTR percentage at that time. This is wrong. There was supposed to only be one tax rate, and that is the rate that was in effect for the year. So I am so sorry that this has been done correctly in the past, and even though, again, this is bad timing, please understand my job, and I'm just trying to fix it. I have been asked as well as my staff how we assess the vehicles. The values that are assessed to the vehicles come from JD Power, which was previously known as NADA. It's similar to the Kelley Blue Book. We use the clean loan value, which is the lowest value in the book. When a brand-new vehicle pulls in from DMV for the year, we use our depreciation schedule to get the value. The brand-new vehicles are listed in the book, but they have no values. We use the original cost, which is pulled from DMV, and the taxpayer would pay on 80% of the cost. We have been asked, "How? Do you know it's my vehicle?" Well, in the JD Power book, we can search the vehicle back to 2003. Each vehicle listed has a portion of the VIN number, usually anywhere up to five numbers, as low as two. We match the taxpayer's VIN to what is in the book. If there are a couple of the same VIN numbers, then we use the lowest value. Once we do this, if the vehicle has 100,000 miles or 130,000 miles and over, then we give the mileage discount, which is 10% for 100%, 20% for anything over 130. If the vehicle pulls in and it's not in the JD Power book, we take the original cost, the year purchased, and the taxpayer would pay on a percentage of that value. So for example, taxpayer paid $5,000 for a 2000 Toyota Camry, and they purchased it in 2018. So the depreciation would be 40%, and they would only be taxed on $2,000. Then if there's high mileage, we would adjust the value. The value increase is not just in Notaway County, it's statewide. Unfortunately, this is out of my control. I did ask for a rate decrease, which has been given, but with this new knowledge, I would ask that you please consider reducing the rate more. I reran the numbers today, which you have. They have changed some. We've had some vehicles that were added that we didn't previously have. I've provided you with different possibilities with different rates, from 365 down to 350, I think it was. And also, for anybody here that doesn't know, you can start making prepayments to the Treasurer's office. If you have any questions.
So Ms. Hudson, just to clarify and kind of put in layman's terms, that, so we've got a couple of things in play right now. The county has consistently used 60% to calculate this tax relief, which is on just the first $20,000 of value of qualifying vehicles.
Correct.
Okay. And as the number of vehicles in the county have increased and the values of those vehicles have increased, we've continued to use the same 60% for a percentage of relief while the state's reimbursement has remained level. So in reality, we should have been incrementally decreasing the percentage of relief that we gave, right?
Correct.
So I guess their objective right now to, we need to correct erroneous calculations on both, both the percentage and the tax rate. And to consider the overall impact of this correction on the taxpayers in light of additional tax burden they were already incurring because of the increased valuation of the vehicles. And then, of course, to ensure that the county recognizes an accurate amount of personal property tax revenue, just, and I'll share my personal thoughts, then turn it over to the other board members. Though the taxpayers have benefited from these erroneous calculations for a number of years with reductions in the tax bills, and I understand and respect that you want to get this corrected, I'm wondering if correcting it incrementally over a period of a few years rather than in one sweep might be a more equitable solution for the taxpayers and something we should consider, just some thoughts.
Yeah. I mean, I'm open to that if, you know, if you guys are open to it. I don't have a problem with doing that.
Other thoughts from board members?
I feel the same way.
Madam Chair. There was a couple of items on here. At this point in time, this is, since the PPTR started with that $950 million, roughly a 17-year era, even though it goes back a little bit further than that with the original PPTR. And I do agree with the other board members that right now, that maybe, because I think too that maybe the board ought to consider sooner rather than later having an additional work session to start looking at the following year's projection, because I believe at some point that we may have to go deeper into the general fund, because things could bottom out next year and the market get flooded, and then that could be catastrophic next year. So just trying to find a happy balance here. I also fear that because of the inflation rates that we've had tax recovery in the high 90s percentage, and I fear that with all of this in place, it could possibly drop to the lowest recovery in the county's history, could be wrong. But I'm just thinking about the people that are going to struggle on both sides of this, and they're going to say, "Well, what do we decide to pay?" And then I look at, y'all's office may get overrun, the Treasurer's office, additional DMV holes. It could be a lot of work. I'm up for any suggestions that'll take this burden off the citizens as best as possible, but also get us on a progression to your goal.
Right.
And next year, I mean, if we decided to go from 60 to 55 this year, but also, we need to know where that rate is going to be so we can adjust the budget accordingly.
Yeah, absolutely. I can run any report on that that you guys need.
Okay.
I think I can do it in the dark and with my eyes closed at this point.
So Mr. Costin, if we want to facilitate looking at whether we do an incremental correction in this relief rate, whether we lower the personal property tax rate overall even further, what do we need to do to facilitate this?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, one question I'd like to get out of the way before I answer that one. Mr. Rourke, when you say you have to go deeper into the general fund, you mean the reserves?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, sir.
Anything that we do in terms of adjusting the levy, we're going to have to go to public hearing on. And I think what I'm hearing tonight is the board, we've run a number of these throughout the last week or so on 360, 365, full impact on the PPTR. I'm thinking that the board may want to do a work session next week so that they can see the, meet with the Commissioner and actually go through and look at what some of these alternatives look like, because all we've got in front of us this evening is 365, 360, 355, and 350 showing the, what it should be, in terms of what it should be compared to what it has been historically. So I would like to recommend a work session, and then at the same time, leave yourself some, some room for a public hearing, as we may have to reset a levy. That would be my recommendation. Now, we do have to act though, by statute, the Commissioner is required to finish the book of the, of the bills and have that turned over to the Treasurer by September 1. And once it is in Ms. My's hand, then you will not be able to alter any of your rates.
Will next week give us time?
Well, I'm thinking next week for a work session to look at the options, but perhaps you might want to go ahead and just set your, set a public hearing for early August, just to have that option.
Madam Chair, I move that the board, that our board set August 10, 2022, at 7:00 in a general district courtroom, for a special meeting to conduct a public hearing to amend the adopted FY 2223 budget and to adjust revenues and expenditures resulting, no, a special meeting to conduct a public hearing to amend the adopted budget, resulting from the establishment of a personal property tax rate of 360 per $100 per 100 in assessed value. That's my motion.
So we've got a motion. May I ask a question? Let's get a second. Can we put a second to put it on the floor?
I did a second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. So resulting from the establishment of a personal property tax rate of 360, I thought we had gone to 365.
That would, this would allow you to investigate lowering to 360.
Okay.
Which would give you the option to stay at 365 or to even go lower.
So we do have the option to even go lower.
Yeah.
All right.
Just can raise it, but we can lower it.
Right. But none of the numbers you have before you or that we've seen up until this evening factor in anything other than 60% from historic perspective? And then what should be the correct percentage, which is about, well, you've got it right there, 33. And could, Madam Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
Could you explain for folks why it varies from 33 to 34? When you go from 360, it's, at 365, it's 32. Then at 360, it goes to 33.
Correct.
And then at 355, it's at 33, but then at 350, it's 34. Can you maybe explain that a little bit for folks?
I'll try. So at the 365, you have a higher tax due, so the rate, the PPTR rate is going to be a tad bit lower. And then, of course, the rate for 360 is a little bit lower, but that, that rate is a little bit higher. I wish I could give you an honest answer on that, but I don't want to sit here and speculate, because all I'm doing is keying these numbers in the system, and it figures it for me.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor to set the public hearing as set forth by Mr. Vaughn on August 10, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the general district courtroom. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The public hearing date has been set.
Madam Chairman, do you wish to set a date and time for your work session with the Commissioner?
We can do that. Does that require a board vote as well? Isn't that, we don't require that, do we?
It's not a scheduled meeting, so I would prefer that we go ahead and do a vote on it.
Okay.
And have it in the record, and then.
So we're looking at next week for that?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that going to give you time to advertise?
We've advertised.
We've already done that, yeah.
For the public, we don't have to, we're good for next week, too.
We'll notice it up. We'll notice it up.
So what day of the week are we looking at? This is the week of July 25?
Ms. Kelly, would you like to give a suggestion on a date? I was thinking the 20th, the 28th.
Post-Christmas tomorrow, you can have it as early as 27.
So as early as the 27th?
28th would be fine.
Should we just go with the 28th?
28th, Thursday, the 28th, 7:00.
Yes.
7:00 PM, and we'll assume this room for a work session.
And you do want to vote on this?
I would like a vote.
So do we have a motion to set August, I mean, July 28, 7:00 PM for a work session between the board and the Commissioner of Revenue?
So move.
A second.
All right. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry, I should have consulted you about your availability on that date.
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson.
You're welcome.
Do we have any sign-up sheets for delegations from the public tonight?
Well, you know Sonny gonna say something.
All right. We welcome delegations from the public. There's a five-minute time limit per speaker. Sonny Abbott.
Madam Chair, members of the board. The perception of what is accurate, truthful, understood, or reported reliably remains in question. A recent edition of the Courier Record highlighted these circumstances. When I spoke in June about the pending budget, did any of you think I gave false data? I provided the name, contact information, the amount to the county administrator with the recommendation to verify the local effort and match that was required to be provided to schools. The schools got the same information. What justification was there for providing $1 million more above the requirement? The entire budget process, from a board standpoint, as seen by citizens, was all last minute. Apparently, the discussion made by Mr. Rourke had little impact. Waiting until June 27 to get answers is like any citizen that asks questions from where I stand now. There is a clear indication that the budget process isn't understood by several board members. Asking critical questions three days before the fiscal year ends makes folks wonder why they didn't ask those questions months ago, if the process didn't start in June. Now, let's set aside the lack of understanding of the budget process, since we'll all experience this handy work, and ask yourselves, which of you followed up to ensure citizens' questions get answered? Even when given direction from the chair, nothing happens. No follow-up. Why won't one of you simply ask if questions raised in the last meeting were answered? Those of us who come to these meetings, ask questions, don't expect to be ignored, yet we are. The board gets the same treatment despite giving direction to respond. The boards ignored, just like us. No follow-up, nothing. When speakers come before this board, their words simply fade away. Finally, back on the budget. I've learned that the current registrar is four courses away from being, achieving certification. Apparently, certification means different things to different people. This board provided funding for a deputy, an assistant deputy, a trainer, and two students, a dramatic increase in funding. No previous registrar was provided that much assistance. Can we be optimistic, or will the unintended consequences of the four favorable votes add to the despair already being experienced in the county? Thanks for listening. And before I sit down, I want to thank Mr. Costin. He did call and make an attempt to answer one of my questions most recently, and I appreciate his efforts.
Richard H. Ingram, Jr.
Madam Chair, members of the board.
I know.
I'm back. I decided to do something a little bit different. I wrote out some questions, thinking, and, and I know you can't answer them now, but here they are. Who is on the committee working on the comprehensive plan? Any person from outside the county? Who is working on rewriting the renewable energy ordinance? Any person from outside the county giving input? Whose idea was it to create a two-mile-wide swath from the Notaway River to Crete and from Crete to Fort Pickett and from Crete to Burfley? Did solar companies suggest this, and how did they get to have input? Is the county administration pushing the idea of locating solar industrial sites in rural areas? If so, why? Have any of the county administration, Board of Supervisors, or Planning Commission members met with? met with solar companies, their attorneys, or lobbyists for solar? If so, what were the subjects of the meeting? Were perks involved, dinners, lunches, et cetera? Is pressure being applied to county administration, board of supervisors, or planning commission to put solar industrial sites in rural areas? If so, by whom? Have promises been made to any of the above or their families concerning monetary advantages? You know, that's a big issue in Charlotte County. Are you prepared to pit neighbor against neighbor or county landowners against out-of-state or out-of-county large landowners who want to put industrial solar in rural areas? Have any other solar companies requesting to put these sites in rural areas, rural areas, excuse me, have a decommissioned one? If so, what was done to the used equipment, the panels, et cetera? Were they recycled or just trashed? Was the land where they were located restored to the condition it was in before the sites were placed there? The soil, topsoil returned? Trees planted? Grass and shrubs planted and fertilized? I've been reading a lot about this, and I don't think anybody can tell you right now what the cost of decommissioning one of these things is going to be. Whose estimate is it? Are they taking inflation into account? Who's going to pay for it? I hear this thing about these bonds. Hey, in twenty years, those bonds are not going to be where they are, what they are, and that's the way things are going. The other thing is, one in ten recycle, cost is not economically feasible to do, to recycle these things. And then some questions for you. How many of you would want one of these industrial sites within five hundred feet of your home? How many of you would want one within three hundred feet of your property line? Would you be concerned about runoff? Would you be concerned about the water quality in your well? Would you be concerned about the temperature increase around your property? Would you be concerned about the value of your property decreasing because one of these sites being located next to your property? I picked this up today, I said it in the article I'm emailing y'all, I don't know whether y'all read them or not, but anyway. This is a gentleman from California, solar energy expert and CEO of Recycled PV Solar. The industry is supposed to be green, but in reality, it's all about the money. Thank you.
Chris Page.
How y'all doing today?
How you doing?
How are you?
I'm the House Chair, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak. Here today to talk to you about water. I know it's a big deal around here. And specifically, the intentions of the state actors in this water, some people call it water war that's going on. You know, somebody shows their true intentions when they provide this board with a motion to consider. And in that motion, it says, hey, this is what we want. Now, this entire time, they said, Prince Edward County said they want to run a water line into Burkeville, take the state facilities over in Crewe. But their motion says that they want to have the authority to take any water customer into account. And it goes back to what Blackstone's been saying the entire time. They want to come in and take Fast C and the apartment buildings or Viewmap. And so, and then let's talk about other bad faith things that the state has done. You know, when this started, they reached out to Blackstone, and they said, hey, you know, we want to, you know, take, you know, move our water facility somewhere else for the state facilities. Can you provide us water and bypass Crewe? Blackstone said, well, we won't bypass Crewe, but we have the amount of water to supply. And we could work something out. Blackstone spent twenty-seven thousand dollars to do studies and research for them and told them that their rate was negotiable when they came up with a final rate. And what happened was, the state went to Prince Edward, it said, Blackstone said the state was not, the rate was not negotiable. And so, you know, you have to work with somebody who's going to be upfront and truthful. And not only that, Blackstone has been stuck with the twenty-seven thousand dollar bill. The state brought the proposal, Blackstone spent the money, they sent an invoice, the state told them to kick rocks. But why, why would we even be considering doing business with people like that? And, and if the project itself is going to bankrupt our neighbors and then also take business from, you know, our towns, our main water supply in the county, I don't understand why we'd even be talking to these people and how, how we haven't encouraged towns to work this situation out. On top of that, you know, why not pass a motion that allows Blackstone to provide water to anywhere in the county? I mean, if it's good for Prince Edward to put that motion forward, why, why don't we think about that here? That would actually allow Blackstone to come up with options for the Coxville water lines. Well, you know, and I know Mr. Vaughn says he's waiting on some financing stuff, but Blackstone can't even look into project or financing or any kind of planning without even getting permission to run the line. And those people say they're in desperate need of water. Trash services, as a town of Blackstone citizens, and I'm now paying two costs for trash services. A three-dollar meter fee, and then now I'm sure my bill may go up for the cost of the, you guys jumped from zero to, was it forty-seven?
Forty-two.
Forty-two per. And I'm wondering, how much the town saved the county in collecting trash services? Because technically, the town said, well, hey, that's a big jump from zero to forty-two. We're not going to offer trash services anymore, everybody take it to the convenience centers. What cost would that put on the county? How much overloaded would the convenience centers be? How many more trucks, how many more people would you need to run those centers? And I'd like to see you guys talk tonight about figuring a way out because people who are already paying the town double because they're paying for service, plus they're paying you for use of landfill, shouldn't have to pay even more on top of that when their neighbor doesn't have to. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this concludes the delegations from the public. Tonight, we're holding a public hearing relating to redistricting ordinance. Mr. Costin, will you provide an introduction to this for us?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Madam Chair, excuse me. Was Mr. Tatum signed up?
Did I miss? I'm so sorry. No, thank you, I appreciate it. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Tatum, please accept my apologies. Dennis Tatum.
Yes.
I'm, I'm so sorry.
I just, how you doing? I just think that solar power, Notaway, is a good thing to keep the taxpayers paying so much more taxes. Like I said in the last meeting, to help with the school protection, the police departments. Other counties are taking advantage of this, and I think Notaway needs to do the same. If you put it in the right place, I think it's good.
Thank you very much. Okay.
All right, Madam Chairman, to the, to the matter of the public hearing, this is a public hearing required by the Code of Virginia to, for the board to consider a redistricting ordinance, which will set the polling places and election districts. The board, and I hope many of the folks here will recall that we began this process in the early part of this year, and it involved, I'm, oh, sorry, I had a timer on. It had involved naming this board as the redistricting committee. And it extended that partnership out to the ex officio members, one representative of the local Democratic Party, one representative of the local Republican Party, a representative of the NAACP, as well as our registrar, Mr. Reynolds. There were several work sessions that were aided by the Commonwealth Regional Council that was able to display online, so folks could watch from home, how we moved various census tracts around to create the districts. It was quite a different approach this year. We were challenged by the fact that laws changed and the populations in the prisons were not counted unless they met certain criteria. So the numbers drastically changed, and it created a demographic disparity on one of our election districts, Election District Three. The committee, the board, worked through that and developed a, an option that met the demographic criteria so that the, each district is approximately within ten percent equal in population. And that result is on a map that's actually on the wall out in the lobby. From that map, an ordinance was drafted, which listed out in what would be known as a meets and bounds manner, where each of the districts would, would fall. Now, the matter there is that, those, that is reflected in the map, and you have to just kind of read through. It literally is brought out by census tract borders, it's brought out by road borders, it's brought out by natural features such as the rivers. So that's all laid out there in the ordinance that you have before you this evening. The one item that I would like to clarify is there's been some speculation and questions about when does this ordinance take effect? The last full paragraph of the ordinance reads, and it be further ordained that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption and enactment by the Board of Supervisors in Notaway County, Virginia, and upon issuance of a certificate of no objection pursuant to an order from the Office of the Attorney General of Virginia. Should the board adopt this ordinance this evening after your public hearing, then the materials that make up the demographic information, the map, this ordinance is ready to go by our attorney, Mr. McRoberts, and it will be sent to the Office of the Attorney General. And once the Attorney General signs off on that, makes that finding of no objection, at that moment in time, the ordinance becomes effective. I know that there was an earlier draft that stated it was retroactive to January twenty-second that has been taken out, and it's been reported that it actually becomes effective January one of two thousand twenty-three. That is incorrect. It is with the board's action this evening, should the board act this evening, and then finally with the action by the Attorney General's office. It is somewhat critical, the board asked that this matter not be considered in the same month as the budget. So we're now in July, and it is somewhat critical that the board act as the registrar has to prepare for a special election in Election District Three. I'd be happy to take any, any questions the board has at this time.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Costin?
No.
No.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
All right, we, all right, we have a, all right, we have a motion to open the public hearing relating to the redistricting ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, the public hearing is now open. Do we have any registered speakers this evening? Anyone here wish to speak to or against this matter?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Yeah, I know, it's me again.
I'm sorry.
There are sixty-three days till the first vote is taken in September on the twenty-third. Now, this public hearing is required. Not to solicit ideas or concerns or reasons for changes or anything similar. It's simply being held because it's a requirement. Now, Mr. Costin just read the last paragraph of the ordinance. That it shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption by the board once you get a letter from no objection from the Attorney General. Now, I'm pretty sure that you have in your notebooks how long that'll take. We can guess how long it'll take, but it'll be a guess. And why do I ask? If you read the Courier Record recently, you saw my mugshot on the front page. I currently live in District Three. Depending upon when this adoption happens, I could be moved to District Two. And it won't happen tonight after you approve this. It'll happen whatever the date is that the AG comes back with that no objection letter. But I have until August nineteenth to submit documents to run for that seat. If I have no idea, and you have no idea when the AG is going to send it, do I live in District Three or District Two? Am I allowed to run or not? Those questions need to be answered. I can guess, but guessing doesn't work. We do have a clear understanding that if I were appointed to the seat and I jokingly said, well, I'm one of three. The Code of Virginia covers what happens if I get appointed. But to get on the ballot, I have until August nineteenth. Now, those are personal reasons. Moreover, why wasn't there a computer-driven redistricting plan? If you go back in time, and you don't have to go back that many years, we used to have more than one type of example of the redistricting plan. And I'll ask this in all seriousness, why do we only look at the nineteen eighty-eight lawsuit? Why don't we look at some that are more current? One most recently in Maryland? Or the Supreme Court decision in two thousand and sixteen, written by the extremely conservative Justice Kagan, that deals exactly with the same circumstances that happened in nineteen eighty-eight here in Notaway? Things have changed in thirty-four years. I'd appreciate being advised as to the conditions that I presented tonight. Is redistricting impacting my ability to run? Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to this matter?
It's me again now. I agree, Mr. Abbott, we're in a tight situation. There's also other tight situations, such as new voter registration cards need to get sent out to all voters in the county, so like nine thousand people. On top of that, we have this, this special election. He's right about some of the issues, but either way, this plan needs to put forth. Maybe the board or the county can attach maybe a letter to the Attorney General, let him know of the special election, the circumstances we're in, and ask him to expedite a response. That may be a good thing. On top of that, I still feel Mr. Abbott could probably run or seek legal options, you know, an injunction, those types of things. Or if a registered voter wanted to challenge him in that district, they could do that. But it doesn't change the board on what they need to do because we've already pushed this redistricting really to the edge for the registrar's office to be able to prepare for the election, and the new school board seat didn't help a lot, so we really need to get it up there. But thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else? All right, we entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is now closed. So there is a suggested motion in the package. Do we have a motion to adopt the ordinance as before us?
Madam Chair, having met the required advertisement for and conduct of a public hearing on the proposed redistricting ordinance and related map, which this board has given significant time and consideration to, I move the Board of Supervisors, Notaway County, adopt the ordinance before us this evening titled "An Ordinance for the Appointment of Members of Notaway County, Virginia, Board of Supervisors, to Establish Boundary Lines of the Election Districts thereof, to Name Each District, to Establish Polling Places for Each Election District, and to Establish a Centralized Absentee Voter Precinct."
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance as presented. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. To Mr. Abbott's concerns there, is there a legal answer that we should be seeking legal advice to his questions there? Because what my concern is, is if this does puts him in a situation where he can not run, does that put the county in a legal situation? That's the issue that Mr. Abbott thanked me for calling him back on last night. I confirmed my answers this morning that it's all, it's very much about timing. If Mr. Abbott, if you all act tonight, Mr. Abbott is appointed, I understand, tomorrow night, then he can take the seat, and when the Attorney General's office changes, gives us the certification of no objection, he holds that seat until the special election. The winner of the special election, once they certify, then he is no longer the representative in Election District Three. It becomes whoever wins the special election. His question is slightly different, so I'm going to have to defer to counsel as to how this affects his, certainly, you know, seeking to be a qualified candidate.
His ability to qualify work for office and the timing requirements are set by the election laws. Our office is glad to advise the Board with respect to that and conference capacity. Otherwise, it's almost, at least from a professional responsibility standpoint, giving legal advice to a private citizen. But certainly glad to provide that information to the Board, and the Board can deal with it what it will, what it will have at first hand, if wanted.
Any other discussion? All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes as presented.